All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for battling the bomb cyclone polar vortex atmospheric river to come be with us tonight. So before we start, the city council just met on one closed session item and there is nothing to report out at this time. Thank you for viewing the November 20th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. We'll start with the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from their land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in the dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. And if you would like to, please join me for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call roll? I'm here.
President?
Here.
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 Excellent. We have two proclamations this evening. The first is proclamation in recognition of National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, November 2024. And this proclamation will be read by Vice Mayor Stillman.
Okay. Thank you very much. So the National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, November 2024. Whereas Hospice of Humboldt has been dedicated to serving those facing terminal illnesses along with their families since 1979. And through compassionate, patient-centered care, individuals can live with peace and dignity, whether in their own homes or at the Ida Emerson Hospice House surrounded by loved ones. And whereas the essence of hospice and palliative care is meeting patients and families where they are, providing comfort at home, reassurance that choosing hospice preserves hope and quality of life. And these services addresses the full scope of physical and emotional and spiritual needs. And Hospice of Humboldt's home-based palliative care program sets apart from all the other providers, offering high-quality compassionate care tailored to patients' needs and within their own homes. And whereas Hospice of Humboldt is committed to fully utilizing the Ida Emerson Hospice House to expand access to compassionate care, serving more families in Humboldt County and beyond with dignity and support during life's most challenging moments. And whereas Hospice of Humboldt provides essential grief support and education to entire community, offering workshops, support groups, and individual counseling to those experiencing loss and grief. And whereas Hospice of Humboldt envisages a compassionate community where no one dies alone or in fear, and where all who grieve find comfort. And the organization encourages everyone to engage in open conversations with their family, loved ones, healthcare providers about their end-of-life wishes. Now therefore be proclaimed that by the city council of the city of Arcata that November 2024 is the National Hospice Palliative Care Month. And the city council extends their health felt, you know, I was trying to pronounce that word correctly, and sort of I'm thinking about it. Health felt thanks to Hospice of Humboldt for its vital role in raising awareness of hospice and palliative care and providing those invaluable services to our community as a whole. It's stated November 20, 2024, signed by Mayor Matthew Matthews. And so we have Laura Middlemiss and we have Sabrina Delashmit. And did you both want to come up because you both cover different things? And did you want to talk about some of the things you do too, Sabrina?
Yes. It's a little microphone.
Oh, it is. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you both.
Thank you. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Honorable members of council and staff and public present, on behalf of Hospice of Humboldt, I'm Laura Middlemiss. I serve as a board member. And Sabrina Delashmit serves former board member and now development council member.
Correct.
All right. And we are very grateful for the acknowledgement of the work that Hospice of Humboldt does in this month. The palliative care program is relatively new to Hospice of Humboldt and one that we are excited to continue to grow and support as a perfect marriage between helping people in different parts of their journey of illness and whether and to help them die and to move through those stages with dignity. Do you have anything to add, Sabrina? And then I'll talk about our events.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was going to do that. Just go ahead.
Go ahead.
Couple of things coming up that we would love to remind.
Kathy, you're on TV.
Oh, there we are.
You can speak into the microphone.
Okay. I'm so used to the other way. Coming up on December 4th, on a Wednesday, is our annual Light Up A Life event. We would love to invite all to come. It's where people come to honor and celebrate people they have lost, share their stories. It's a moving, moving event. We honor them with light and grace. All are welcome. It's at 5:30 at Hospice of Humboldt. And ongoing, we'd like to encourage people to come by for visits. The third Wednesday at noon time are tours and to show up and come around and we can take you to the Ida Emerson House, show you the campus. I think for people who haven't been there, once they go there, it's kind of a transformative experience.
Yes.
Anything to add, Sabrina?
I think Laura's just done a great job. I could talk and talk and talk about hospice, but Laura and I are two of over 100 volunteers that are very passionate about hospice. And like Alex said, I would definitely encourage you to talk to your healthcare providers, your friends, your family, us about dying with dignity at home and having all your wishes met. So thank you very much. And go National Hospice Care Month.
Thank you so much. Our next proclamation is designating November 16th through December 31st, 2024, as the season of wonder and light in Arcata. And this proclamation will be read by Councilwoman Schaefer.
The season of wonder and light in Arcata, whereas the Arcata Chamber of Commerce and local businesses are coming together for the annual celebration of the holiday season, the season of wonder and light in the heart of Arcata. Everyone is invited to enjoy holiday sights, sounds, and cheer throughout the month. And whereas the Arcade of Chamber of Commerce will host Small Business Saturday event on Saturday, November 16th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. and shall include local business gift previews and promotions across Arcata and other holiday cheer surprises. And we'll celebrate Small Business Saturday on November 30th. And whereas on Friday, December 13th, Santa and Friends will visit Arcata along with music and dance to bring cheer to the children and families across town. And local residents are encouraged to help make Arcata sparkle with a celebration of lights starting in the evening. And whereas on Wednesday, December 25th, the Arcata Chamber of Commerce will partner with Shabbat of Humboldt to light a public menorah on the Arcata Plaza to remain continuously lighted for Hanukkah through January 3rd. And whereas the Arcata Chamber of Commerce encourages residents and visitors to patronize local businesses, support this community event series, enjoy the beautiful array of lights on the historic Arcata Plaza throughout the season to soak up Arcata's friendly small-town holiday atmosphere and to choose Humboldt by trying local stores first, in person and online when it comes to holiday shopping. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata that November 16th through December 31st, 2024 is the season of wonder and light in Arcata. The council also wishes to recognize the Arcata Chamber of Commerce for its constant efforts to promote and enhance Arcata's identity, economy, and cultural spirit. Dated November 20th, 2024 and signed by Mayor Matthews. And we have Bob Judavine and J.D. Garza Valencia, who are the chair and vice chair of the Arcata Chamber of Commerce Board, accept.
Teammed council members, talented staff, bystanders. We truly appreciate. On behalf of myself and the board of the chamber, we deeply appreciate the city's enthusiasm and support for the small and large businesses that drive our economy and help pay the bills, help provide the services that the denizens in Arcata treasure. And we'll look forward to a lot of light this season and hopefully shopping Arcata first now and for the rest of the year. Thanks so much.
Here, here.
Thank you so much. Next is report by commission and committee. And so we have an annual report from the Transaction and Use Tax Oversight Committee. And we can get a report from the Transaction and Use Tax Oversight Committee member, Robin Hashem. And anecdotally, Robin is a long-term committee member who helped pass Measure G in 2008. So thank you.
You kind of took away part of what I was going to say. But now you can see why we call it TUTOC, because transactional use tax oversight committee is big. Anyway, so I was going to just go into a little history of TUTOC and Measure G because as I look around, I'm going, wow, a lot of things have changed since 2008 when that passed. It was approved in November 2008, 63.5% yes, 36.5% no. It's supposed to last for 20 years, which is a long time. And I've been in it from the beginning. It was a general tax approved by 50% plus one, and that was done on purpose because people didn't think that necessarily that it would pass if it had to do the 60%. So that meant it was a general tax. And because of that, and because people really wanted that money just to be spent for public safety and streets and things like that, the TUTOC committee was put in place to kind of do an oversight and to be a reminder to the city council that even though technically that's in the general fund, you were committed to spending it on public safety and public works. So that's been designated that way since then. It's, we get together to review the prior year's spending on streets and public safety and report the results to the council and make recommendations. I guess another new thing is that we get assigned tasks if the city council decides that they're something that you want us to look over. Let's see. I'm going to read this part because last night was a long night with all the wind and stuff and didn't get much sleep. So for the TUT for fiscal year 2023-24 was 2.8 million. Like, and that was about 100K or 3.9% more than it was budgeted. It's been flat over the last three years, but retain that COVID 20% bump up. It's like for this coming year, it might be down like 1.7% and likely to be flat for fiscal year 2025 and '26. But that 3%, 3/4% tax brings in like 92% of the 1% sales tax that was part of that. And the way that the TUT is collected is place of use versus location of transaction. So that means that cars that are purchased or cars that are registered in Arcata is purchased someplace else, we get that money anyway. So that's, that's a good thing. In terms of Measure G expenditures, streets, 2.16 million in fiscal year 2023-24 and 4.77 million citywide. Public safety, the police, 667K in that last year. And citywide spent 7.38 million. So when we started out, it was supposed to be the trend of 1/3 police, 2/3 streets. So over that time period, the committee has recommended, you know, there are some times that the police needed more money to keep the staffing up to what it should be. And Public Works was able to get money from elsewhere. So that's been kind of up and down. But now we're recommending that we go back to that so that the streets, you know, can get their money. And the, the police department seems to be doing really well with what they're doing. And we're back up to the staffing that we need. Let's see. So that was the part about acknowledging that we do need flexibility from year to year, depending on what's happening. We support investing in the streets and the complete streets policy so that, you know, there's safety and accessibility on our streets, which is part of public safety, which the past couple of days, you can kind of see why it's important for people to be out there taking care of the streets and all that. Let's see. Tasking the TUTOC with developing recommendations for oversight, accountability, and reporting for the recent Measure H. So that has approval and apparently our committee's going to kind of do an oversight on that. Okay. So I think the importance of the TUTOC is to continue trust in city leadership so that you will continue to invest those monies of that extra sales tax into streets and public works. And that's why we're here. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't, but I just want to thank the committee for your work and for your flexibility and also for taking on the new task of Measure H. So thank you.
Well, and I will say it's interesting, having been on this committee from the beginning, it is interesting to have the historical perspective because that so easily gets lost as time goes on. So I appreciate also the fact that we come forward and report so that it can be an ongoing educational experience and stay true to the will of the voters. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Yeah, we can clap for that. But yes, thank you so much.
Well, you'll be doing a lot, though, with Measure H. You'll get to look at a lot of different things. So you'll have an opportunity. You should receive that now. You can give that to the whole committee, your clap.
All right. We will now move on to council and staff reports. Are there any staff updates?
No updates, but just one, one difference that you'll notice is our city clerk, Rhea Barley, will be letting people in and out of the meeting on Zoom. So she's going to be jockeying the, the online portion of the meeting. So this will be the first meeting doing that. So if, if she's looking at me like, you know, if, if we have any issues, that's what that might be about. So I just want to thank Rhea for doing that. It'll allow me to focus a little bit more on the content of the meeting than, than admitting people in or out for public comment.
Godspeed. All right. We will start with Sarah.
Um, all right. I have one update because actually this month, our RCEA meeting was early, which rarely happens. And it's not really an update, just kind of an exciting point because we had a great presentation just about RCEA's renewable energy vehicle charging networks and all of the different charging ports and locations where there are currently electric vehicle chargers and new ones going in. And how, you know, that process works and different levels of grant funding and, you know, new future chargers going in. So I was just really excited to see how, you know, it's, RCEA operates the largest public charging network in Humboldt County with 29 different locations of vehicle charging all across Humboldt. And really excited to be adding with some grant funding that we got a while back to like Redway, Garberville, and Orleans. And eventually also we put in a second grant to hopefully expand and have also another charger out in Wichita, an additional down in Soho. So that's really exciting. And also as part of that second kind of round of grants that we had, Carlson Park is going to be getting a charger or probably already has their charger built, be getting a charger out there, which is exciting. And so lots of, and Matt River Hospital as well, so new chargers coming to Arcata. And besides that, I don't have any updates for my boards, but just exciting things happening in Arcata, great chamber mixer at the Hatchet House, great opportunity to connect with people and just enjoy kind of watching Arcata with all of the lights going up and the fun holiday things going on and going out on Saturday and doing the holiday open house and just talking to business owners and trying out fun new restaurants and everything like that. So if you've got the extra time in your schedule, go, you know, walk around downtown, spend some money locally and enjoy, you know, everything everybody has to offer. So thank you.
Thank you. So today I attended a meeting that where Darlene Spoor, the executive director of the Arcata House Partnership was presenting. And as this, as the weather is ramping up, I think it will make everyone feel a little bit better to know that there are organizations such as Arcata House and others that really are ramping up for the cold weather shelters and also in planning for, to make people's holidays special, you know, those that are living without homes. And so there are also a lot of opportunities for us as a community to volunteer. There are so many different ways to volunteer, whether it be providing food for one of the holiday dinners or serving, volunteering at a shelter. There's, there's just more ways than even I realize and I've been volunteering in different ways. I think they keep coming up with lots of ways for us all to be helpful. So if we want to see that good work continue, we do all need to step up as a community and do that. And it does, it is rewarding when you do it. For HCOG, our focus right now is just, is working on finding an executive director. So that's what we're focusing on amongst other business. And then I did, last week had the California Transportation Commission Gas Road Use Charge Technical Advisory Meeting. That's a lot. Yeah. So a lot to just say, working, you know, this has been going on long before I joined, but working on how to transition away from a gas tax into a road use charge so that we can continue to keep our roads up with the declining revenue. So we had a meeting and I think that's, that's it for me.
Excellent. So at the HWMA meeting last Thursday, we decided to send out an RFP to work on SB 1383. So organics processing, though slow, is continuing to chug along. So hopefully we'll have some more updates on that. Taste of the Holidays is tomorrow night. If you want to support Rotary, it's at the community center, lots of different food and beverage there. And I just also wanted to mention that this week is a trans-week of resistance and remembrance. And so I just think that's important to acknowledge that part of our community.
So HTA, Humboldt Transit Authority, and they have been working really for quite some time on the Earth Center. And the Earth Center's initial plans have been submitted to the city of Eureka's Design Review Committee. And so there was a real interest in trying to get it in to the city in case the, I think it was Measure M pass in Eureka around the parking lots. And then they thought, well, that might cause problems and maybe there'll be a lawsuit. But at least we're in the process and trying to get that done because that'll be, the Earth Center is going to be the major transportation, transportation interchange in Eureka. The other thing is, is that I keep thinking about Zoom and how the governor said that you can't have Zoom meetings for like us, we can't Zoom in anymore. And you, and the county has said that's true. And so you have state meetings you want to go to, but you know, we have quite a long drive to get down there. And the other hand, he says climate change and we have to deal with that. So to me, those two things are really in conflict. And I'm wondering if there's some way that we could actually ask our board of supervisors to look into that and see if they can have any traction with, through CSAC or something to be able to see if they can get the governor to think about that differently. Anyway, that's, that's that. And I, nothing actually happened at the Air Resources Board this month, just our normal kinds of things. We have appointments that happened. And there is concern, continual concern about Scotia and the mill down there and the generation mill about pollutants. And I did attend Arcata House too on CERT today, and it was very informative. So thank you.
So I'm going to be attending as a city liaison, the Redwood Economic Development Commission, next Monday. So I'll report on that the following city council meeting. And to piggyback on Arcata House Partnership, their warming center is open. And also the county has received 1 million for youth homelessness and connecting services. And then the other big news in the community is that Arcata House Partnership received a $2.5 million grant to connect Humboldt County families experiencing homelessness with shelter, stable housing, and critical services. So that's very exciting. We're going to be ramping up a lot. And with this strong and prolonged atmospheric river this week, I feel like it's apropos to share that North Arcata just held a disaster preparedness academy, all-day training. And everybody that was a participant went home with a big backpack filled with disaster preparedness supplies. And also just to let you know that it's not over yet. So weather permitting, we will have a disaster preparedness block party. It was going to be outside, but of course we have been able to pivot, we'll be inside. So if you have, you know, if you want to brave some of this, of course, it will be canceled if it's not safe out, but right now it looks like it's going to wrap up. So between 11 and 3, we have a block party in there. We'll be giving away tons of NOAA radios, all kinds of disaster preparedness supplies. It's a family event. So, you know, as we all know, sometimes the children teach the parents. So bring the whole family. We will be having, in addition to Lori Dangler, our renowned expert for tsunami and earthquake, she'll be our guest speaker. We'll have, Arcata Fire District will be bringing their shiny red truck, big hit with the kids. We will have the American Red Cross. We'll have the tsunami working group. We'll have COAT. We will have Arcata CERT, tons of other tablers. And also we'll have a couple brass bands, free face painting for the children, hum bubbles will be there. So it's going to be a lot of fun, but a lot of education. So if you get a chance, swing on by, as always, it's going to be free. We just want everybody to be prepared. All are welcome. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you so much. All right. That brings us to early oral communications. The city council values your comments. The public comment period allows for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. This early section of public comment is limited to 15 minutes and speakers are limited to two minutes each. If you prefer to have a full three minutes of time for your public comment, this item is continued at the end of the meeting under item 13, where speakers are granted three minutes. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. There will also be time to provide public comment specific to each item when that item is being reviewed by the council. So I will be able to take the first four in-person commenters and then we'll move to Zoom and we'll come back to in-person if there's any time left. So please line up if you'd like to make public comment for this early portion.
Thank you guys very much for allowing me to present to you. I am here to speak in support of the idea of a sister city in Palestine as proposed by the Redwood Peace and Justice Center Coalition. We advocated for the Palestine ceasefire resolution, which you passed, and we're very grateful for that. Through that process, we built coalition. We presented with roughly 15,000 petition signatures. This last week, our first ambassador and recent council candidate Shay Freelove visited the board chair of the Boulder, Colorado Nablus Palestine Sister City. In a remarkably favorable turn of events, Shay, who is well-connected to the Boulder circus scene, helped the Boulder Sister City get connected to circus scene at the, after adults and children in the Nablus that were connected there with the circus asked that they be connected to Boulder Colorado circus scene. So Shay, our beloved Shay, helped form those links. He was also briefed on planning and strategies for our sister city. And they offered to Zoom address of an event where we can, people can come and learn more about the sister city plan. I attended the Arcata Nicaragua and Sister City monthly meeting, and they were generous enough to talk over the idea of Arcata Palestine Sister City. Overwhelmingly, they were positive and supportive of the, there being a second Arcata Sister City in Palestine. We recently spoke to several leaders in the spiritual community, including the Jewish community, the Unitarians, the Muslims, and the Quakers. Former Democratic State Rep. Wes Chesbrough signed our petition. And we will not wait for you to vote to formalize a sister city to start fundraising for Palestine medical aid. And so please come to the Palestine Talking Corner.
Thank you so much.
Saturdays during the conference market.
Hi, I'm Nezzy Wade, and I'm here because a couple of weeks ago, actually on the 6th, this council in the city proclaimed this week, the 17th to the 23rd, as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And we're in the middle of that week right now. And I just want to bring your attention towards some very important things in case we haven't been thinking about them lately. We have a very large number of unhoused, unsheltered individuals in our county. And Arcata has 553 of them that were counted in the PIT count. And we know that's an undercount. We know that it's not able, we're not able to count people on private We know that it's not able, we're not able to count people on private property and all of those things. So there are a lot of people here, and there are a lot of people in the county that are left without any place to shelter. And so AHA has been working with many other organizations for a long time to try and bring people what they need. And I know a lot of people are out there doing that now. We were at the courthouse and throughout the towns today feeding people. But it's important that we start looking at alternatives, that we can actually really do something to get people into conditions where they can thrive. We're never going to have permanent housing enough fast enough. And we can get a lot of money in big projects. The state is not going to fund projects that don't look a little bit carceral or institutional. And we would really like you to think about the flexibility for meeting people where they are and actually doing things that are village-like, that people have dignity and can manage themselves and can have a lot more dignity and self-reliance and build towards that. Because it's, our systems now are really not working for a lot of people. And we have a lot of people out there who would love to try something else. So please consider that and work with us and other organizations that really want to see some improvements. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor Meredith and Vice Mayor Alex and all of our council and support staff here this evening. I am Steve Davis. I'm the firstborn senator for First Dentist Ralph L. Davis, DDS, of his passing with hospice care on January 3, 2022. I am glad to report a quick recovery from PG&E where my mother, the Rose of Roseburg, and I suffered through the night with our electricity not working. I am first and foremost here to encourage everyone individually, corporately, from town and city across this great county and state of California to do all we can to support Palestine and adopt Gaza cities in hope that the sneak attacks will never happen again on the great country of Israel and the forced insanity that has happened now in the Holy Land will end swiftly. I'm also hoping that Russians and Ukrainians and people in Myanmar and the people on the streets of the city of Arcata, who may be dressed in black, will receive something like a white scarf or some ability so we who are driving safely will not cause their demise. And so I'm truly hoping to end with the best Thanksgiving every day with your City of Arcata Center.
Thank you so much for your comments.
And the senior center and Rotarians delivered today.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Is there anybody else in person that would like to make public comment? Is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes. Jean, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. I hope you can all hear me. I'm wondering if you have ever been attacked? And if you've ever had your bodily safety violated? And about if you've ever had that violation happen in public? Have you ever grappled with the sense that your life was being threatened in that moment? And that it could immediately end? Has your body and mind ever experienced the alarm and fear of being toppled, tackled, and then suffocated? I just want you to know that on October 8th this year, my child and I were in the Arcata Plaza when three law enforcement tackled a black man. Eventually, it became five that were armed and sitting on top of him, twisting his body, grinding his head into concrete. I want you to know that every witness to this was crying out in fear of the violence we were seeing being done to this quiet man who had been waiting for them for 20 minutes cooperating. I myself had to split my attention because my child was terrified. An entire, the entire evening afterwards, I am telling you, she couldn't calm down. How was Mike doing, this man who was the target of this? Knowing that his life could be taken by police in an instant, just the way Eric Garner was, who was suffocated on suspicion of selling a single cigarette 10 years ago? How was Mike doing now, knowing that his life could have been snuffed out the way that so many black men have had that happen to them in public? As though extrajudicial murder by state actors is normal. And I want to know if you understand that the social terror that is waged, it's the kind of social terror that James Baldwin, the great black writer, wrote about. And on top of that, the insult to injury is that it gets, it gets labeled as paranoia afterward. How is Mike doing now?
Thank you so much for your comments. Thank you.
Gracie, please go ahead.
Hello, I want to also second Jean's comment about Mike's, how Mike was being treated in the plaza on October 8th. It's not okay or appropriate or, how would I say it? It's very shameful how the City of Arcata pays the police to oppress black people in our neighborhood. Someone that was trying to cook and feed unhoused people, which we also have in disregard, as we've seen last night. The Arcata House Partnership did not open its doors for emergency shelter while winds are going 28 miles per hour and gusts 60 miles per hour. It just shows that our City of Arcata does not prioritize human beings and the dignity of each individual. We prioritize having festivals and on days, on the month of the Indigenous murder missing woman, and celebrating the businesses that called the cops on a black person for feeding people on the. Like how, I don't understand how you guys can celebrate all this and not acknowledge the pain that people in Arcata are suffering because we're not treating each other humanely. That's all.
Thank you.
Nobody else has their hand raised.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close early oral communication.
I'm sorry, a hand raised right as I said that.
They can wait, and there's the end. They can wait till the end. I just closed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that will take us to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Item A is approve the minutes of the city council meeting of October 30, 2024. B is approve the minutes of the city council meeting of November 6, 2024. C, bi-weekly report on disbursements. D is adopt resolution number 245-17, authorizing the city manager to file a financial assistance application with the State Water Resources Control Board to fund the city's steel waterline replacement product, project, and adopt resolution number 245-18 stating the intent to reimburse expenditures by the State Water Resources Control Board made in support of the city's steel waterline replacement project. Would any council member or staff like to remove an item from consent?
I would like to just remove D.
Okay. I will open the consent calendar up to public comment. If anybody wants to make consent, make public comment on the consent calendar, please come up. On the consent calendar, so anything that I just read, if you have a comment on.
I want to take this opportunity once again to compliment each one of you and the great city of Arcata.
Sir, that's, no, we're talking about the consent calendar.
I'm sorry I didn't get it in front of me. But we have some very organized people who are making sure.
Thank you, sir. That's, we're not taking that kind of comment right now. It's on the consent calendar. So you'll, thank you. Thank you so much.
So I would move for approval on the consent calendar, A, B, and C.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Stillman, and a second by Councilwoman Atkins Salazar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's move to item D. Alex?
So the reason I took that off is that I was thinking about the number of people that I've talked to that are concerned about the letter they received that deals with the, what their water pipes are like going to their homes, and are they going to have to replace them, et cetera? And so since this is dealing with replacement of our water lines, it brought it back to my thought process that maybe we should address it and we could put some of those people at ease. Thank you.
I'm sure I can speak to a little bit of that. This has been an EPA, national EPA mandate for the states to enforce, not enforce, but to help local jurisdictions and all water systems assess if there is lead in our existing service lines and also in our private properties. And so so far, the city has done a lot of ground truthing on the ground. So if you've seen our water meter readers walking around town, opening up a meter box, they're looking at what the components are for the service line on both the private side and the public side. And then we've also done a lot of, a lot of work about when different neighborhoods were developed and therefore knowing what their plumbing systems are. We needed to report exactly what we knew so far, which includes a lot of unknowns. We haven't been able to get to every private residence. And so this is a letter that we are mandated to send, that we weren't able to identify exactly what is on their private side, and inviting people to help us identify that type. So far, we have not at all identified a lead issue in Arcata. This is something that we encourage community members to take the survey, to give the number a call, email the, email that is on the letter that went out to property owners.
Oh, I thought my finger did it. I'm sorry. Thank you very much for doing that. I just think, you know, I've run into people, and I've seen it on Nextdoor, their concerns about it, and what does that mean? And I suggest they just fill out the survey and send it in as I did. So, thank you.
Could I ask a clarifying question? And I apologize, probably everybody else got it, but if we have identified lead on the private side, how is that taken care of financially?
Yeah, so there are, again, we have not identified those situations yet. And if that would come up, there are, the city would support that private property owner in identifying financial opportunities. You know, a lot of these regulations are coming in, and all of the funding mechanisms or next steps aren't fully identified. But there, it seems to be, there will probably be some financial support from the state to do so. And again, that is why we, we need to complete the inventory and get participation in the surveys, give us a call so we can support the whole city in that endeavor.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that those who may be a little reticent can be put at ease, knowing that there will be some help looking to figure this out. They're not on their own entirely. Thanks.
All right, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion about item D.
So I would move for adoption of resolution number 24-17.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Does anybody want to make public comment on item D?
I'm Joanne McGary, and I'm a tenant here in Arcata. And I read on Nextdoor about this letter, and so I came by. And the staff has been very wonderful in welcoming me practically on a daily basis for information, including a copy of this letter, which I subsequently gave to a friend who knows a lot about water issues. And so I still don't retain that copy. But as a tenant, I want to make sure, and you know, Flint, Michigan, is that famous city that we could look to for making sure that we have, as Arcata, doing our due diligence to make sure that everyone, whether they own property or live on rental property, are consuming safe water out of their taps. So I just want to express my concern that we protect the tenants a lot because we don't have a lot of agency, I guess, sometimes to find out what we are drinking and how old our pipes are and what they're made of. So any help to mitigate that for some of us who are concerned would be deeply appreciated.
Thank you so much. All right, we have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, there's a hand raised for public comment. Sarai, please go ahead.
Sir, this is on item D?
Yes.
Okay.
As a property owner of a studio that should be commercially zoned in Marion Springs, Village Marion Springs, Ornolco Township, State of Michigan, I experienced the arduous and important digging up of potential lead pipes, rusted. We don't want more leaking going on. And it is worth the effort for what Joanne has just mentioned, the delivery of good, clean drinking water for cooking and for personal hygiene. And we are blessed in the state of California to have decades of good, clean drinking water from our taps. So thank you for making this a priority. And thank you for leading the world in what you do with the wastewater off to your plant of rejuvenation, and then adding to the birds and the otters and returning City of Arcata water the best we can to our Humboldt Bay. I truly appreciate your attention in a timely way, staying in budget and delivering this with backup plans as needed for our food trucks, for our restaurants, and for all of our guests and residents. Long live the wise and kind. And I truly believe in Humboldt County, especially the City of Arcata, that we will continue the great history of people that are very, very nice and that we can lead in having crime-free living as well. Thank you. May you have a Thanksgiving every day. God bless America and everyone.
Thank you so much. And you said there is somebody on Zoom?
Yes, I have someone on Zoom. Sarai, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the comment that, like, advising people to do what you did, like, and advising people to call the number, like, thinking about all the ways that, like, folks are treated in the community, like, we could.
Man, we're, this is on item D on the consent calendar?
I'm getting there.
Do you have a comment on that?
Listen, so the ways that people have to call and talk on the phone and be, like, to get all this information, get a survey, do all this, all this stuff. And we're not, like, we're not prepared to go to the next step of, like, what happens if people do find that kind of thing? It's very representative of the things that we're talking about, like, the people's concerns, like, for y'all to just say, oh, just fill out the survey and do what I did. Like, that is very representative of the care that seems to be missing as people have really, really large concerns about lead in water. So I just want to encourage folks, like, like, folks have two and three jobs. Like, folks have kids, like, folks have to do a lot of stuff. They might have to call the bank. They might have to be on the phone with other agencies and institutions. So for y'all to have it roll off your tongue, oh, just fill out the survey, oh, just call the number, that shit is hard. Like, I'm saying, like, people want to be involved, and people are coming to you, like, asking. asking, and if the answer is like, oh, just fill out the survey, do what I did, and we'll try to help you find, like, money for it later, like, that's not comforting. It's not. And it's representative of the care that we're talking about is missing. So I just want to, like, I get it, I know that you need information, I get it, we're maybe not there, you haven't found lead in the water, but telling people, just go ahead and fill out the survey, no, like, let's have, like, let's have answer. It's like telling people to go to the racial equity training and not having anything done about racial equity. Go, fill out the survey, nobody's going to do anything about the survey. Like, where are the responses on the surveys that people have already, like, the work that people have already done? It seems very, very, very disrespectful to just tell people, I'm, like, who are very concerned about their drinking water, just fill out the survey, do what I did. And y'all are sitting on the city council with, like, ha-ha smiles, claps, like, it's very disconnected, very disconnected.
All right, thank you for your comments and my apologies for cutting you off before. All right, so anybody else on Zoom?
There is not, but I have a question on the clerk's side for the motion. I did hear Council, Vice Mayor Stillman moved to adopt resolution number 245-17. There is a second resolution, item D, resolution number 245-18, so I just wanted to make sure that that's included in the motion.
Okay, I will do, I will, I guess there's another way, I could just move to adopt item D. Could that cover the whole thing or would you like me to just say, adopt resolution number 245-17, authorizing the city manager to file a financial assistance application with the State Water Resource Control Board to fund city steel water line replacement project and adopt resolution number 245-18 stating that the internet to reimburse, the intent is to reimburse expenditures by the State Water Resource Control Board made in support of the city's steel water line replacement project. And that's my motion. And just one other thing I was going to add, everybody is getting a letter and so landlords will get a letter also. So that's my motion, if that's complete. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will, or do you want, you seconded it before.
I believe I seconded it and I still do, thank you.
Excellent, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's move on from the consent calendar, is everybody doing all right? All right. Takes us to new business, which is consider adopting resolution number 245-15, authorizing the submission of a streamlined application for funding under the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program, PLHA, Notice of Funds Availability, NOFA 2024, and amended PLHA plan. And can we get a staff report from Director of Community Development, David Loyah? Or Jen Darke?
I was going to say, no, you can get a staff report from me. So the city applied for a five-year allocation in 2022 of the permanent local housing allocation, but the 2022 and 2023 allocations were not finalized yet. So we're required to submit a streamlined application in order to expend those last two years of our five years worth of funding. We utilized the 2019 and part of 2020 allocation for pre-development loan for the Rogers Garage Project and the remaining 2020 funds, which must be dispersed by April 30th, will be addressed at your next meeting. There's a new HCD requirement for this allocation, which is why we have to amend the PLHA plan. And that requirement is that 40% of the funding must support homeownership. So we've proposed in that plan to make the amendment that we can do an owner occupied rehab program. We've also added a moderate income down payment assistance. So those are the two that we're proposing to add to the new plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you've got.
Could I ask, so it says that 40% of the funds are allocated, that's to make sure. Can we ensure more? Do we, can we go above 40% for the homeownership allocation and other rehabilitation for homes?
We can. Yeah, there's no, there's no requirement that we spend exactly 40%. It's just that's the allocation.
So when we make a motion for that, I guess, how does that happen if we want to see more than 40%?
It would be part of what we put into the plan. We're, we're not specifying the exact amount in the plan, it's just that we have to add those projects to our plan in order to spend that money.
So a minimum of 40%, but if it turns out that, you know, you can do more, you will.
Exactly.
Or can.
You can, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
And, and just to add to what Councilmember White's saying, and I assume, like, that project, whatever those ideas are, will come to us for approval, so then that would be a time that we could either, you know, accept it or reject it because we want it to go somewhere else?
Absolutely. So either guidelines would have to come to you, either programs' guidelines would have to come to you for adoption.
Thank you. And I do, I have remembered of people that have been able to access that home buyers' assistance program and, and other things like that, and it's, it's pretty life-changing for folks. I'm glad that we're able to offer that when we can.
Jen, I was hoping that you could clarify what that moderate income bracket looks like, just because I know before when we were talking about, like, down pair, down payment assistance programs, that, like, it wasn't really equating because the cost of homes were so expensive in Arcata that people didn't really qualify for that program. And so what does that, you know, income ratio look like now? And is it attainable for people?
Sure, I looked at that today and the answer is maybe, kind of. If you're a family of four and you make about $100,000 a year, you would be a moderate income family. You could potentially purchase one of four houses that is listed currently today for under $500,000 in the city of Arcata, potentially. It's feasible, but it's not, it's a very thin margin of people that would qualify, which is why I would encourage us to consider the owner occupied rehab program because we do have low-income owners, you know, seniors maybe, or, or there's a lot of low-income owners, for whatever reason, that could use the money for repairs. And we haven't run that program since, I believe, 2010 or 2011. So it's been a long time since we've run an owner occupied rehab program. So I would encourage that as possibly being more reasonable, at least at this time.
And Jen, just to, we have a mobile home rehabilitation program, but a lot of people were asking, you know, so this kind of fills that gap for those who, you know, are low-income and need some rehabilitation but don't live in a, you know, manufactured or a mobile home.
Yes, exactly. It could, it could bridge that.
Well, I'm glad that we are able to help, you know, folks that need help with repairing their home. And it's also just shows us that we have a lot more work to do in housing to make the other part of this work, so.
So I just wanted to bring up one thing. Of course, I'm going to talk about history. So back in the 70s, the first program that we had was for Sunset area and they, they knew that there were a lot of issues up there as far as the plumbing wasn't working right, they were getting sewer gas, et cetera. And so that was the beginning of the very first program that the Arcata Economic Development Corporation ran, which is now called North something. And so we've been doing housing issues for a very long time, trying to upgrade housing to make it better for people to live in. And so I'm glad that we have this program and thank you for bringing it forward and working on it. And with that, I would like to consider adopting resolution 245-15, authorizing the submission of the streamlined application for funding under the Permanent Local Housing Allocation and Notice of Funds Availability, 2024, and amend PLHA plan.
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Stillman and a second from Councilwoman Schaefer. I'll open it up to public comment if anybody would like to comment on this agenda item.
Once again, City of Arcata, please lead us to more and still more affordable and available housing. We know the critical needs for traveling nurses, permanent nurses, doctors, people who are coming here to study with Cal Poly Humboldt, the people who are mentally challenged in Humboldt County need more resources so that if they are committing more than their fair share of 5150s, we are not sending them back onto the hard, cold sidewalk streets in the cold rain or the, the delightful sunshine that global warming seems to be delivering some positive in some cyclone ways. Plus, be ready for people fleeing wildfires, dust storms, and other natural disasters where a bus ride or a flight from some connection through Denver can lead them to the nicest and the best people where we're living in the crime-free areas and doing all we can in preparation of taking care of these people. I am for people of faith to always have a guest room or a guest house so that they can accommodate their friends traveling through and other people in emergency situations so that the monies that they would pay for motel hotel bills could go to their people of faith charities and do all we can to sustain our forests wisely, to keep the fishing delights and industry. My father purchased the USS LSIL 1091 museum and went tuna fishing on the high seas for eight years. And so I know the joy and the privilege of being someone who grew up with a fresh salmon dinner. And the restaurants all around are sustainable and beautiful, healthy, wise. City of Arcata and beyond are to be treasured, supported, as well as our eco groovy, fabulous daydreamers and buttercup getups, where quality clothing at very reasonable prices are some of our delights. And please do all we can, Chamber of Commerce connections, to grow sustainability and wise living here in our Humboldt County, City of Arcata.
Thank you so much for your comments. Is, is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes, I do see one hand raised.
Okay.
Go ahead, Sarai.
Thank you so much. And I just really quickly wanted to connect it to restrictive housing covenants. I know we're talking about something just a little bit different and right now, honestly, I have to, like, recatch my train of thought because the, okay, yes, I remember my question. The question is, so we're applying, not question, more comment. The application is for funds, however, we're not quite sure if people are going to apply for funds because the terms of the application are quite unreachable for lots of people in the community. Yeah, and I just want to reiterate the parallels again, going back to the ways that there's money for stuff and there's funding for stuff and there's still manages to be, like, not much happening or going on. So yeah, I'm super down for the application of funds, but I wonder, like, how, how are people going to get access to the funds? Like, where are the gaps in the spaces that people could get more access to the funds so that what you guys are applying for actually ends up being supportive to folks? Yeah. And I really just want to reiterate also that there are restricted, there were restrictive housing covenants, like restricting folks from living in houses in Arcata. And so going back to the ground level work that needs to be done on the level of housing, all the way from restrictive covenants to, like, supporting folks who are houseless in terms of doors not opening, like, I really just, I'm looking for gaps to be filled, really just looking for, for ways that, like, things go all the way through and that there's feedback loops on stuff and that the applications for money, like, it actually turns into support for people as opposed to being like, well, uh, like, we don't know, like, it might work maybe for some people, like, again, it just sounds, it's, it sounds bad, like, I'm not sure if y'all hear how it sounds, like, disconnected. It sounds like you don't care if it happens or not. Like, you're going to apply for the funding, yeah, let's apply for it, I'll second that, like, oh, let's get, let's get them, like, go for it, let's go for it. Like, we're at the baseball game, bud, like, it sucks. It sucks to listen to. It's really hard, it's really difficult. Like, and by difficult and hard, I mean, like, heartbreaking. I mean, like, y'all are talking about inviting and welcoming and, like, no, there's not because we can hear it in the policies, we hear it in the voices, we hear it in the applications, we hear it in the rental applications. It sucks, dude, to try so hard to be a part of something. And this is where we're at.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else on Zoom?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that motion passes. Everybody going all right? Need a break? All right, thank you. Let's move on to item B, which is consider resolution number 245-19, a resolution of the city council of the City of Arcata reaffirming Arcata's commitment to the values of community, inclusivity, environmental protection, and respect. So a little bit of background on this, I know that there's been a lot of divisiveness and a lot of fear and a lot of just general unease after the recent election and after, you know, what's going on in our community. So I looked back and it looked like in 2017, right after the 2016 election, the city, then city council made a resolution, kind of reaffirming our commitment to Arcata's values. And I thought that this would be an appropriate time to once again bring this back and just, you know, recognize, and I'll read the resolution for those of you that don't have it in front of you, but, you know, I feel like not only is this resolution kind of reaffirming our values, but it also, you know, acknowledges that there are gaps to be filled and we are not, you know, 100% there yet, but we are working towards it. But I just wanted to put this out there. So I'm going to read resolution number 245-19, a resolution of the city council of the City of Arcata reaffirming Arcata's commitment to the values of community, inclusivity, environmental protection, and respect. Whereas the City of Arcata values the richness and strength that diversity brings to our community and welcomes people of all social, racial, ethnic, religious, and national backgrounds and beliefs, a diverse community is a strong and vibrant community. And whereas the City of Arcata has a proud history of supporting policies and practices that prohibit discrimination based on class, race, ethnicity, national origin, religion, sexual orientation, and disability. And whereas the City of Arcata values the wonder of our natural environment, which is the basis for the health, recreation, beauty, economy, and high quality of life in our community. And whereas on January 4th, 2017, the council unanimously adopted resolution number 16724, reaffirming the city's commitment to the values of community, inclusivity, environmental protection, and respect. Whereas on June 7th, 2017, the council adopted ordinance number 1490 declaring itself a sanctuary city and safeguarding the civil rights, safety, and dignity of all Arcata residents. And whereas the City of Arcata acknowledges that while we are actively working to fill gaps in our approach to public safety to ensure historically excluded and divested communities feel safe, we have not been able to protect everyone and are taking measures to rectify this. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the city council of the City of Arcata will continue to support the creation of an inclusive and equitable community where all people can feel like they belong and contribute. We recognize that inclusivity is a moral imperative, is vital to our community, and reflects our shared commitment to social justice. And we will continue to support serving the entire community in recognizing the dignity of all persons regardless of their immigration status. All individuals should know that they may safely seek and attain the assistance of city departments, including the police department, regardless of their personal immigration status. And we will continue to support the U.S. Constitution and the Bill of Rights. We continue to believe in this nation's founding principles of religious freedom. We oppose special requirements for people based on, based on their faith or national origin. We celebrate diversity in our community. And we will continue to support women's rights and equal rights and public safety for all genders. We support the rights of people in our community to love and marry whom they choose. To all the 2S LGBTQAI people all over the county, the, all over the country who feel scared, bullied, or alone, the people of Arcata support you. We will continue to support policies to slow climate change. The people of Arcata trust the strong scientific evidence that climate change is real and largely human caused. In this city, bordered by water and cushioned by majestic redwoods, we will continue to work on clean power, alternative energy, public transit system. work on clean power, alternative energy, public transit systems, and alternative transportations, reducing our carbon footprint and achieving zero waste. And we will continue to support sensible, science-based regulations that help to preserve our environment. We support our many organic farmers, the health of our bee population, our diverse wildlife, and the flourishing balance of our entire ecosystem. Clean air and water are essential resources we all need. We understand how important it is to protect nature for future generations. And we will continue to support efforts to ensure and increase access to invariable health care, including mental health care for all of our residents. We appreciate the valuable services that our health centers bring to our community and recognize the role that the government plays to ensure health care for all. We will continue to support programs to aid and shelter homeless community. We will continue to work with homeless services, providers, to achieve that goal of housing for all. And we will continue to support our arts community. Our creative arts community makes Arcata a vibrant and inspiring place to live. We are proud of our local artists, and we will promote public art, art festivals, and local theater musicians and dancers. And we will continue to support our entrepreneurs, small manufacturing companies, visionaries, intellectuals, tradespeople, artists, and environmentalists who all do their part in Arcata to make the state of California the sixth largest economy in the world. In supporting these endeavors, we will work tirelessly to create and build a community that reflects our values. So, I know it's a lot, it's a heavy lift for five people, so I will also put it on our community to also share and live these values and know that, you know, we're sitting up here, but it is not just us that needs to live these values. We need to listen to each other, we need to be compassionate to one another, we need to, I'll do our part. And I will open it up to the rest of the council if they'd like to make comments. And thank you for allowing me to read this.
So I just wanted to say, I think it would be wise of us to ask that we actually publish that in the Mad River Union and so that other people can see that, if that's okay with the council to do something like that. And then we will be able to get that further than those that are watching tonight. And thank you for putting that together, I appreciate it.
Yeah. I just want to add, there's always a lot of work to be done in Humboldt County, in Arcata, in our country, in our world, and that especially, you know, this time of year when it's dark and both, you know, actually dark and maybe a little dark for some of us, to sit and reflect with that darkness and, you know, really think about what we want for our community and how all of us, even though we see a lot of division and divisiveness, whether it be at these meetings or on the national scale or on the street corners in front of the courthouse, that, you know, we as humans surviving in this county and in the city together have a lot more in common with one another, you know, than those that divide us, you know, that we have with them. So I just, you know, to look to our community and support one another and to support people through those personal connections as well.
So I am, just to reaffirm that, you know, Arcata is a sanctuary city. Cuna comunidad, Unidad del Norte de Arcata would like to open and offer space at our new resilient hub in North Arcata for those important conversations about inclusivity. And in particular, you know, with the Latinx community, the majority living in the North Arcata Valley West community. So just putting it out there that it's open for everyone and all are welcome.
I would say, well said by all of my colleagues. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up for public comment and then we can come back. So, does anybody would like to make public comment on this item? Yes. No.
I think whether it's proclamations, ceremonial matters at the beginning of these meetings and these very intense descriptive resolutions such as this one right now, and there's a history apparently of reaffirming a lot of these values. I was surprised to see this on the agenda, so I asked for a copy early on, a hard copy because that's how I roll. And I looked at it and it sounds great in so many ways. I shared it with some other people. And what you're hearing a lot, and maybe you're hearing some of it from people calling in online, is the performativeness sometimes of these things, that yes, it sounds good, it looks good, it's a piece of paper, but what's behind it and what's the action that's really going to come from it? And I was just reading briefly that Los Angeles, my hometown, reaffirmed itself specifically as a sanctuary city. And maybe we need to do some of that specificity and not this generalized resolution. You know, you do this generalized resolution, but come back to some of the specific type of things that we're talking about and really demonstrate what we're doing. And that goes back to my concepts of the international cities of peace because we do live in a time right now where we need to join, whether it's joining ourselves in community in the City of Arcata, the Greater Humboldt area, the state, the nation, the world, we need to join hands in these types of efforts to show unity. International cities of peace, nonviolent cities. We are heading into some potentially violent times with wars and other matters. And finally, as the mayor spoke, compassion. That is something we really need to demonstrate, not just say it on a piece of paper, to demonstrate our compassion for one another. And the charter of compassion is that type of thing. So I reiterate that it would be wonderful for the City of Arcata to pursue all those things. It's not hard. And please do consider that for our new year. Thank you.
Thank you.
May this be the day and these be the days of this great spirit and the glory we can all appreciate from the land of the kinetic sculpture race where we all go the extra efforts in artistic and athletic abilities for the glory. And may this be the time from creation to redemption to resurrection to now, that all people in all places may have peace, love, joy, and the delights of music from their hearts and minds and all surrounding them with the wonderful Thanksgiving season onto the high and holy days. And I'm truly hoping there will never be another hungry child or lonely senior, especially here in the City of Arcata and beyond. And I know we have great resources of farmlands and farmers, of the excellencies of our natural food and high-quality stores like Eureka National Foods and Arcata Co-op and the California and nationwide stores like Costco and Winko and Walmart and our grocery outlet Safeway people. And these are the shortlist of the nice, wise legacies with new restaurants taking the place of those that, for whatever reasons, were not able to sustain themselves. And so I truly hope that as a born Californian, raised Humboldt County artist, hoping to bring my art and art installations and my poetry and songwriting, tomorrow Louise Bacon Ogden, part of our McKinleyville Community Choir, we practice at your Arcata Presbyterian Church. She will be starting art offerings at our senior center in Arcata along with McKinleyville's Rotary and Thanksgiving Dinner at our Azalea Hall. And I know our fine folks in Eureka, Fortuna, Scotia, to Trinidad, and throughout our county, we have the opportunity for continued sustainable Thanksgiving baskets and vouchers for overnight stay and cleansing contract showers and good skincare and wellness.
Thank you so much for your comments. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to make in-person comment on this agenda item, item B?
Hello, everyone. My name is Florence Parks. I'm the executive director for Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the North Coast. And I'm elated that we are reaffirming the values of this beautiful city and community and that we'll be focused on those values. And I urge us to focus on our youth, going further upstream, ensuring that our young people have access to opportunities, to volunteers in the community, to mentoring. And I also want to bring attention to a mentoring program that happens right here in Arcata. Not a program that I get to run, unfortunately, but the Black Music, the HC Black Music and Arts Association, also referred to as HC Bama, has been a program that offers community building here locally. They do a lot of great work here on the plaza. They had a reading program where they just spread out a blanket and people came and read with the kids. There's so many wonderful things that happen through that program. And they also centered our priority communities so that all communities can feel safe here. One of our community members was a mentor in that program, and he was mentoring five young people. So I also just want to bring attention to the fact that there are beautiful people in our community volunteering and doing great things. And I appreciate you guys listening to all of our many needs and assessing those and also just being here so late. I know that your commitment to our values here will ensure that we stay the course, even if we take a step back that will take two forward. So thank you for your time and your commitment to excellence and reaffirming the values in our community.
Thank you, Florence. Just wanted to thank you, Florence, for all the wonderful work that you do with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Important work. Zoom?
Yes, I have several hands raised. GGH, please go ahead.
This feels like a joke. Like, this feels like a performative, disgraceful PR stunt. And coming from what I can see on Zoom, five white faces, and you're telling us how you are going to recommit to Arcata being a safe, welcoming, inclusive place for everybody, respectful, when the mayor has made a comment to a Palestinian wearing a shirt with a Palestinian state outlined about the shirt being a Hamas shirt. I mean, like, lead by example. You, you want this community to feel inclusive? What are you gonna do to make it that way? What tangibly are you going to bring to the table instead of performative resolution sweeping statements about what you think Arcata is when we have been screaming for the last year and the last several weeks? That that is not what Arcata is. That as a black or brown person, that is not what Arcata is to us. And for you to reaffirm that this is what Arcata is tells me that you don't hear us, that you're not hearing our voices, that you're not hearing our pain, that you're not believing our suffering that we face in this community every day. So I want to know, put your money where your mouth is. Let's take some money from the police budget and fund some programs for black and brown youth. How are you, like, what are you going to do? This resolution means nothing to us, just so you know. This is a way for you to pat yourselves on the back and feel better so you can go home and sleep knowing that your police department brutalizes black folks, that your community murders black folks and with clear evidence of who the perpetrator is and lets it go unsolved for nearly 10 years, that your community allows the harassment, the hate crimes towards Arabs, Palestinians, Muslims, without batting an eye. You don't hear us, you don't see us, and it's clear as day. So show us. Put your money where your mouth is. Lead by example. Show us what you're gonna do to change Arcata because this is not what Arcata is. Maybe it's what Arcata aspires to be, but y'all are far from your goal.
Thank you.
Call-in user two, please go ahead. Caller user, call-in user two, it looks like you might be muted.
Am I coming through now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, you're coming through.
Great, thank you. Hi, this is Bob Rottenberg. Thank you, Mayor Matthews, for bringing this resolution to the city. I would, in contrast with the previous speaker, I would like to pat you on the back for doing this and to agree with her and several other people that this is a good first step, this is not the end. But it's definitely timely and definitely well-needed for us to make that statement that this is who, not only who we see ourselves as being, but who we want to be. This is moving us into the future. Question that I have, going back to the original ordinance, 1490, is that included in the new resolution? Is everything that's in 1490 included in the new resolution? I'm not sure whether you're able to answer that question right now, but let me just make a comment about the original resolution in section 4602, the Arcata Police Department Practices. A couple of things jumped out at me. Everything else in that resolution uses the word "shall." But in, in section 4602, in A and B, the word "should" is there rather than "shall." So it reads, absent the judicial warrant, Arcata Police should honor federal immigration detainee requests only in cases of serious or violent felonies. Why could that not be "shall" honor only in cases? And comment B also with the same, consistent with Government Code 7283.1, Arcata Police should not provide federal immigration authorities and so on. Could that not also be "shall"? Because like C and D say, Arcata Police shall protect the due process rights, Arcata Police shall not collaborate or share, and so on, and so on. So I'm just, I'm really glad that the new ordinance, the new resolution includes the original ordinance. As I said, it's a good, it's a good starting place for us to become the city that we all want us to not only be but to become. But so just those questions about whether those two evidences of "shoulds" could become "shall's." Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Amy, please go ahead.
I'm so encouraged to see these values affirmed by the council because they tie directly into the problem of overpolicing, particularly of black and brown bodies in our community, and to the anti-Palestinian racism that's been on display recently. and to the anti-Palestinian racism that's been on display recently, in addition to concerns about other vulnerable populations in our community. I urge you, however, to make good on the commitment by translating these words into prominent, concrete, public, meaningful action. A show of good faith and a good first step, for example, could be dropping the charges against Big Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. All right. First of all, I just want to uplift everything that Gigi said earlier. Y'all need to be listening to her and to people like her. And like she said, it's clear that you haven't been. And City Council, I have to ask, have you really been, quote, "actively working to fill gaps to your approach to public safety, to ensure historically excluded and divested communities feel safe"? This original resolution was written in 2017, right? So what have you been doing? That's a genuine question. I want a progress report. And I'm guessing some of you felt like you're being attacked by the public comments lately. I'd invite you to see it as being given an opportunity to do the right thing. For example, Meredith, Alex, and Stacy, did you know you've aligned yourselves with some of the most notorious racists in the county? Last meeting, you heard from several Zionists speaking against the proposal for a sister city in Palestine, which you three have also stated opposition to. One of these people is well-known for ripping out Black Lives Matter lawn signs and calling the police on her neighbors. She and her family have stalked and harassed Palestinians and their friends, including children, as you heard last meeting. Their daughter pointed to the photos of young martyrs we had on our altar and said, "You're mourning terrorists." She said this about children, babies, infants. Did her parents, who were there, say anything? Of course not. They are the ones who taught her to dehumanize Palestinians. Do you three, Meredith, Alex, Stacy, intend to stand shoulder to shoulder with these people? Is this making the community more inclusive? Is it making it safe for everyone? Because by aligning yourselves with these people, you give them legitimacy, you embolden them, you let them spew hate in this chamber without rebuke, which makes my friends unsafe in this town. Actually, experientially unsafe, the experience of being stalked, yelled at, harassed. Is this what you are promoting as the so-called leaders of Arcata? You have been tolerating and implicitly encouraging anti-Palestinian racism while you're now here talking about DEI resolutions. And to be clear, divisiveness is not the problem, council. A lack of justice is what is causing this, quote-unquote, divisiveness you are all so concerned about. Justice is what we need in order to have true community safety, equity, and inclusion. I will also tie this to the overpolicing by your APD. Last week, you ignored all of your community members that came to you from all walks of life to get an update on what you're doing.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Jean, please go ahead.
My head is spinning a bit right now, hearing those words of honoring shared humanity and safety for everybody. Who knew, after 406 or something days of no cutting ties with apartheid, no doing your duty to honor the international law that says, and the World Court that says, everyone, it is law of the land, must cut ties to the apartheid that is slaughtering Palestinians? Who knew that you could find the words after watching that and hearing your own constituents, including Palestinian children, who last year spoke before you pleading with you to save the children of Gaza that have now been split open with their brains spilled out? And you have done what exactly? Tell us, I want an answer. What you have done for 406 days for the Palestinian constituents in your city that have come here and told you we need protection, just like they need protection over there because dehumanization is spreading violence? So that little girls who are Arab are getting their throats slashed at the park? They're getting drowned, attempted to be drowned by people in Texas. They are being killed like in Illinois, that little boy who just turned six years old for being Muslim, okay? My daughter was told that her grandmother with a hijab, whose picture was on the altar that Ellen described at the Festival of Alters, was a terrorist. Mayor, she died two months ago of cancer. My daughter has to put up with that after being called a terrorist at school and being laughed at about it, being told, "Have you just jumped the border to get here?" And then being told, "You know, all the people in Palestine over there?" Yeah, your family and the people, listen, it's God's plan that they're supposed to die. Two weeks ago, Mayor, you had a Zionist, and let me repeat what that means, because like segregationist, it has a proper definition. It means pro-white supremacy and pro-Western colonialism through the apartheid state, which is criminal, that is slaughtering and carrying out genocide right now in a concentration camp. That person said a slogan. They cheerfully said, "From the quad to the plaza, send them all over to Gaza," to which you replied, "Mayor, thank you." Next comment. A person told you during a Holocaust to take everyone here pleading for the lives of human beings to be saved, that we all too also be sent over to the gas chamber, and you couldn't even protect us or denounce it when you witnessed it? You have no idea the hell we're in because you don't even see us. Do you hear me, Mayor?
Thank you for your comments.
Sarai, please go ahead.
Man, just like, just take yourself out of the robot state for a second, bud. Like, that's what she's talking about. Thank you, next comment. Like, take a breath. Take a breath, it's okay. To feel that. And to let it influence the work that you're doing, I encourage you, instead of saying, "Oh, uh-uh, what's going on in our community," I encourage you to write your own resolution of what's going on. I encourage you to be able to define for yourself what you think is going on, because y'all don't even have words for it, bud. Y'all don't even have words for it. We're getting pats on the back, and then we're moving to discussing the semantics of "should" and "shall." Let's discuss the semantics of racism and genocide, bud. Let's discuss the difference between dropping all these motherfucking charges and the difference between taking the charges from felony misdemeanors. It's, those are the gaps we're talking about. It's okay to sit there and be uncomfortable in the gaps. Because half the work we're asking you to do is bear witness, to just experience. And honestly, you know, not sure what your experiences are. Can't tell you what your experiences are. But I can encourage you to sit there in the fact that the frustration, y'all feel attacked, y'all feel that this is divisive. No, bud, conflict is not divisive. Getting told about yourself is not divisive. Imagine the feelings in this meeting. Imagine the feelings, imagine walking around with that cognitive dissonance every day, every day, and then being expected to do a full-time job, and then get a letter about the lead in the water, and then get a letter that says, "Oh, shit, you actually don't qualify for this program that the city applied for money for, and they told you they would help you find, they promised all this help for resources." Imagine that. Wouldn't you find that to be a little divisive? Like, wouldn't you feel, like, you wouldn't call that divisive. You would say, "Fuck, this is some heavy shit. I wish there was someone to support." And you would look around, and you would look to the community, and thank God, people on this call and people in the room, they have community.
Thank you for your comments.
Ramira, please go ahead.
There you go. At least a few extra seconds will do. But I just want to echo what everyone on this call has said and what people have said over the past year, over the past year. I can't say any of... How do you sit there? How do you five or three sit there and say these things? How are you so comfortable following in the steps of your grandparents that lived here? Of those white supremacists that traded indigenous slaves on the Arcata Plaza? That ethnically cleansed Chinese immigrant communities in Eureka? How are you so comfortable being the exact same as them? And to walk around and tell your constituents these things? Over the past year, we've been screaming at you that there is a genocide happening in Palestine, and you align yourself with the Nazi Zionist of this community that stalk, harass, threaten, throw slurs at the black and indigenous people of this community? How can you sit there and do these things? Make it make sense. So if this was written in 2017, show us what you have done since. Put out a list and show us what you have done since and what you are going to do. This is not okay. Drop the charges against Big Mike. Stop being fucking white supremacist. I can't see y'all right now, but, yeah. How do y'all have no shame?
Thank you for your comments.
Jamila, please go ahead.
Hello, and good evening. I would just also like to uplift just so many of the words spoken by our community members tonight, and also in just echoing, yeah, and acknowledging that there's this, like, obvious sense that we are being perceived as violent or breaking the decorum of this space, but the reality is, we're refusing to normalize a genocide. And I firmly believe that if you were, as Sarai pointed out, actually bearing witness, like, I'm sure you all have social media, follow journalists on the grounds in Gaza. If you saw what we are seeing right now, we would be having a very different meeting about what this DEI conversation should be looking like. We would be planning, you know, so much more beyond that. You would be just as moved as we were if you could look and see the slaughtering of brown bodies and it tear you down, as it should. I just, there's just really not much more to be said about that. So the fact that, you know, and that you're not witnessing, that's a problem, because it's not just that, you're not witnessing the violence around you on a daily basis in our community. Just like Gigi said, this is happening daily for some of us, not for you, maybe, but for many of us. And you're not seeing that. And so, you know, just for example, my name's Jamila Hashem. I'm a student at Cal Poly. I've been, just started leading anti-Palestinian racism trainings on Zoom. They're free. Please come to one. I would love to give you one. Like, there's real tangible things that you can be doing and that, like, we can all be doing together. And look to the community members that are, like, doing this work, not because we, like, claim to just be, like, arbiters of social justice, it's because we're doing this out of survival. So just keep that in mind and look to the black and brown people around you to lead you into this work. Please don't make performative statements anymore. It does nothing but cause us more harm. So please use this opportunity to reflect on how you truly can do better and show us how you're going to do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alice, please go ahead. Alice? It looks like you may be muted.
Thank you. So to take action, we need to address the lack of justice towards black and brown people in this community. Two meetings ago, a council member discussed requesting all charges be dropped for Big Mike. His arraignment was yesterday. What are you all doing to make sure this beloved community member is not criminalized for existing as a black man in Humboldt County? What are you all doing to hold these violent and racist police accountable? If you really want an inclusive, respectful environment, you have got to start doing the work. Creating a safe city is only possible when you have a strong community. We don't need cops. We need to show up for each other. We need to listen to each other. We need to support each other. We can do this by addressing the outcries of our community, addressing the blatant racism we are seeing against our Palestinian and Arab community. Jamila's anti-Palestinian racism training would be taking action. We want Arcata to be a sister city to Gaza so that we can offer as much support as humanly possible. Israel has bombed hospitals in Gaza over 500 times. It's illegal under international law to attack hospitals. A sister city is taking action. Divesting in Israel is taking action. I am formally asking you as city representatives to ask Calpers to divest from investments in Israel. This would be taking action. The only thing that's going to deepen the hostility that is festering in this community is if you allow the racism and lies spewed towards Palestinians here and globally to continue. Take action, stop performing, and show up for Palestine and our black and brown community.
Thank you.
I only see one more hand raised, but I believe it was a speaker from earlier. Should I unmute to confirm, or?
No, we had Sarai speak on this topic.
No, I'm gonna bring it back to the council. We are considering Resolution Number 24-19. Does anybody have anything else to add? If not, I would... I just want to set the record straight. While my last name is White, I am Brown. I am a proud Latina, so just putting that out there.
People ask, "You just sit up there and listen." We have no choice but to sit here and listen because it's public comment, and we have to listen to what anyone says to us, whatever complaints they have, good, bad, or anything. So we have to sit here and listen. I wish people could come in person and talk to us so that we could actually see them and have some real connection with them, instead of just calling in on Zoom and they're anonymous. And I would prefer that we could do this in a different manner.
Reframe it, we get to listen. We get to listen, because we've signed up for this to listen.
That's true. She said, "You just sit there." Well, yes, we do, because we can't go anywhere else. Did you get to speak?
We will go to early communicate, early, we will go to oral communications after this and you will have a chance to speak. This was on a resolution.
I'm going to go ahead and take action. I'm going to say, um, consider resolution. Okay, because she has consideration. Approved resolution number 245-19, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, reforming Arcata's commitment to values of the community, inclusivity, environmental protection, and respect.
May I interrupt real quick? Um, just with the resolution, the action would be to adopt, um, is that okay to include that in the motion?
You want it adopted? Okay, I'm going to move to adopt resolution number 245-19, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, reforming Arcata's commitment to values of the community, inclusivity, environmental protection, and respect. Also, I would like to make sure that it's published in the matter reunion. Thank you.
I will second that and I will just also echo, you know, the speakers that spoke to, you know, this point that this, this is a starting point. It's a place to, to strive for and, and to look forward and always, and we know that there is always work to be done.
And we know that we're a small city and a lot of the work has to be done at the federal government and Congress and, and, um, and that we're not able to really do that because we're in this small city in Northern California. And I know a lot of people are frustrated because we can't actually make that change.
All right, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Stillman and...
But, but we will do absolutely everything we can in this small town. Correct?
Yes, thank you. And a second by Councilwoman Schaefer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, so that is going to bring us now to oral and written communication. Um, speakers are limited to three minutes each. Uh, if you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium.
Can we take a break? Because I have no idea how many more people will call back in under oral communications and so it would be nice. I drank a lot of water.
All right, let's take a five minute break. Thanks, Alex. All right, it is time for oral and, um, written communication. So if you'd like to make a public comment, if you're in person, now is the time. We won't be going back and forth, so if you want to make public comment, please stand up again. Thank you.
Oh, I get to be here also in the capacity of just being a one, um, a human in our community. My name is Florence and, um, I just want to take some space and say how hard I know it must be to sit behind and hear the things that we're hearing. And there is no blame. It is not any of your individual responsibilities to fix this community issue. We all must rise up together. So, um, but I do want to say and give a character reference for Mike. When I first met Mike, um, his six foot five beauty and his glow of an ability to give to the community, he, he didn't have much to give and he gave all of it. And, um, even in the capacity which he was, um, in, he was giving at that time. Even he didn't, he, if you talk to Mike today, he still doesn't know what he did wrong. He doesn't understand, um, that he needed a permit or whatever the, the things are behind the scenes that he should have done. So I just want to, um, share the space and say it's so important that we wrap our, our arms around our young individuals that are already giving in the way that they should be. And that we celebrate that. And we'll have many moments to celebrate one another and not just be assaulted by words and actions, but let's lift each other up. Um, and I want to thank you for holding the space, for making the resolution, whether or not it looks performative, whatever it looks like to someone else, that you stand up for what you believe is right and do what you can to improve our community, especially make it safe for Brown and Black bodies. Because it's not safe today. There are implicit biases that happen all the time and there's so much education that needs to be, to needs to be shared so that people feel safe with each other and vulnerable. And willing to learn. And not closed off. So I want you to continue to open your hearts and those that are not here in this space, but want to contribute to our better community here, you must also open up your heart for the safe space. So, thank you. Um, I hope that there is healing that happens because that's what our community needs and that's what Mike wants and that's what he deserves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm, I'm here to support the idea of a sister city. I would really like to see us doing everything we can to extend the hand of friendship and goodwill while, uh, an entire population is being slaughtered. I think I would also love to see us do some more resolution work, um, either, either by mending the ceasefire resolution to include, um, arms embargo to Israel. And anything we can do. I'm sick about what's happening. I, I started crying here tonight listening to the pain in this room. I start my day every day, I, I, I watch several different news shows. If you watch Democracy Now!, if you just start your morning with that, you can see what is happening and it, there's so little of it on mainstream news. But if you don't know that this is a slaughter, that this is a full-on genocide, sadistic genocide that's happening, um, it's either will for, willful ignorance or, uh, people just want their, their heads in the sand. There's just so much death and destruction and, and I, I wonder what are the teenagers and the kids that are coming up? That see our government greenlighting this genocide? They see what's okay. What, what are they gonna, how are they gonna turn out? I, I grew up watching Vietnam on TV and that's back in the days where you actually saw the horrors of war. And it's still there thanks to independent media. But there's a lot of people at the top that don't want us to see it and they want to frame this that that they're fighting terrorists. You know, um, Benjamin Netanyahu is being investigated for knowing about October 7th, that it was an imminent attack. He knew it for a year. And Shin Bet just lifted, Shin Bet is a organization like the FBI is here. They just lifted a gag order and he knew it was going to happen and if you've watched, if you've watched Israel long enough, they look for, they provoke, they look for excuses to go in and slaughter. They do it about every two and a half years on average since, since 2020. They want the population wiped out. They don't want the Palestinian people there and they want their land. And they've pretty, they've made all these stories about, about how, how horrible the Palestinians are and the Palestinian fighters. It's, it's it's wrong.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGarry and I am here to let us all know that I discovered when I was on the computer earlier today that it's United Nations World Child Day. And, um, for the longest time, when we've been talking this past year about what's happening over in Palestine and Israel, um, I have often and others have often talked about first and foremost, the children. And the theme of this year's UN World Children's Day is listen to the future. And listen to the voices of the children. So here's an action that I think you there on the dais, as our leaders in our town can do. Talk to the young, talk to the children about so many things that are happening in our community. And what their future will be. I agree with Tricia here that, and I've asked in the past at other meetings, that our ceasefire resolution that we created and passed unanimously on March 6th of this year include, and it was hoped that it would include back then, a resolve to um, stop sending money and weapons to Israel. And I think now is the time. Senator Sanders was on the floor of the Senate today proposing an arms embargo to Israel. We cannot afford in so many ways, and especially for the children. Think about the orphaned, maimed, amputated, and dead children. WNSF, I forgot the, wounded child, no surviving family. That's a new acronym that was created when this um, assault in Gaza occurred. Children without family. This is World Child's Day. Really seriously thoughts, think about the action that you can take right now for the children of the world and the children of our community who are going to say, what did you do? What did you do? When this was happening? Don't be a bystander on this. Don't stick your head in the sand. Don't want to know. It's happening and we are complicit as a country in this massacre.
Thank you for your comments. All right, let's go online.
Gigi, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so firstly, I just want to address, um, I believe, uh, Councilmember Alex um, made a statement about wishing that we would come in person and basically say it to your face or create community. Um, and we do come in person. Um, I, I don't know if you realize there is a bomb cyclone happening right now. Um, many of us are hunkering down. Um, but I want you to also understand, because it seems that you're really out of touch with what we're saying, that when we come in person, we are in, in, as a holding space with Zionists who make overtly racist statements repeatedly, saying some of the most horrifically, abhorrently racist things on that stand. Um, calling to have the police called on us for speaking. Um, and, uh, and we don't feel safe, right? It's not, it doesn't feel like a, a welcoming space that, that you foster for us. Um, while the Zionists are very much protected and Sarah will remind them, don't worry, the police are standing by. Uh, when they quote unquote feel unsafe when we speak about a ceasefire. Um, when they are saying things like send them all to Gaza, um, and all uh, Palestinians or Muslims are, are inherently evil and terrorists, et cetera. It doesn't create a, a space where we feel safe to be in person with these people. Because they then stalk us in the community. They identify our faces. They follow us. They say horrible things to us. Um, they, they confront us in all kinds of totally inappropriate ways, but they are protected and we are not. And their feeling of safety is upheld. They, they get to feel safe and, and we do not. So I just want you to kind of like take that in. There is a reason why we don't consistently come in person. Because we're made to feel unsafe when we're there in person. So, um, I just want you to understand that. And I also want to address, um, Mike and the overpolicing or the underpolicing or the strange racist policing that's happening in Arcata. I was on the plaza at 6:00 PM last Saturday, um, meeting a friend for dinner. Um, I had a man try to grab me, um, and say, give me a kiss. And snatch me up and I had to scream in his face and get a get away from him. And then, within an hour, I witnessed three different fights. I didn't see a single police officer. And what you're telling us on these meetings is that, you know, the businesses really want the plaza cleaned up, they, you know, that, that we have to crack down on policing on the plaza because it's, you know, the businesses don't feel safe.
Thank you for your comments. Sarai, please go ahead.
Just wanna notice, like, just notice what we're doing there. And like, as much as I do respect, like, gentleness and bringing safety to a space, and coming to it with consistency, and like, giving what you wanna get, just 'cause y'all are not yelling, doesn't mean, like, y'all are not acting violently. Like, telling us all the time that you can't respond to public comment, and then needing to say, like, needing to identify, and then needing to tell us how you feel in response, like, that's changing institutionally the rules, especially when we're spoken to about decorum and all this stuff, like, that is violence. Like, cutting speakers off, the robotic voice, I get it, we have to do time limits, I get it, I've worked in institutions, and that's the hilarious thing, is that the people that you're talking to, the people that you're accusing of being violent, and like, we, we have master's degrees, we're teaching college classes, we're taking care of your kids, we're running programs, we're in these interviews that are asking us, how do you deal with conflict? How do you manage things? How do you deal when the community members are upset? We're getting asked all these questions all the time. I was gonna say something like, blah, 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 like, you're talking about us not coming in person, like, you better be grateful we're not there in person, 'cause we're coming for your jobs. But I, I'll switch that to, we already are doing your jobs in community, we're already doing it. So we can come here and we can say, thank you, we can say, we appreciate you, thank you for doing the work. I know that you have to say, like, oh, you know, we wanna represent the norms as we wanna see them, we wanna talk about them as if they already exist. But there's a difference between doing that and refusing to acknowledge the shortcomings. Y'all should write the resolution, and y'all should write it from the perspective of, this is what we actually are doing, and this is how we want to change, this is how we are now, and this is how it should change. Because all this gentleness, like, all this, like, the guise of, like, we're the violent ones, because we're emotional, you don't get my safe self, you don't get my gentle self. And I have several of them, again, degrees, facilitations, but you don't get my gentle self, because like Jamila said, we are fighting for our survival. I'm not gonna speak more quietly when y'all refuse to hear us, but you wanna have a conversation? At least realize the common terms. At least realize, what the fuck, at least realize, like, we're going to festivals, we're hearing the white people at festivals full of black people at reggae, hearing white kids call other, call black kids the N-word, and that's the culture. Come on. Come on. Just 'cause, just 'cause you're not yelling, doesn't mean it's not violent.
Thank you for your comments. Ellen, please go ahead.
Yeah, just uplifting everything that Gigi and Sarai just said, that is something that you all need to hear. Alex, since you don't know me, I will introduce myself. I have called in several times to this meeting. I'm a community member, I spend a lot of time and money in Arcata, I own my own home here in Humboldt County, I'm an HHSU grad, I, I also have a master's. I'm a homeowner, a mom, a wife, I have a professional career, I'm just really a regular middle-aged, middle-class white lady. I attend these meetings virtually, because I'm also chronically ill, and I need to limit the time I spend indoors with a lot of people, so I don't get acutely sick. Alex, there are disabled people in your community who cannot make it to the meetings in person, okay? Thanks, hope that helps. And no, Alex, you do not just have to sit and listen, you can respond, just like you did to tell us you have to sit and listen, you can denounce the hate speech, you can do it. I know another local body, I don't remember if it was Board of Supervisors, or you were against it at council, but a couple years back, they took action, or they at least made some kind of a statement against the hate speech they were getting during public comment. I don't know the procedural process, you know, how that works, but if you wanted to, you would find a way. You clearly do not care, and that is what we are addressing. Since I was cut off earlier, I want to speak about the fact that you all ignored your community last week, or last meeting. We came to you from all walks of life to get an update on what you're doing, to help get Mike's charges dropped, not just reduced, but fully dropped, and to hold your police force accountable for their violent racist policing of the community. Folks expressed their love for their friend, their outrage at witnessing his violent arrest, some spoke softly, some more forcefully, some explained how it's tied to larger community issues. You all ignored all of us. Sincerely, how dare you? Is this how you reflect your commitment to social justice and equity, where everyone can contribute? You really think this inspires faith among people of uncertain immigration status to safely seek and obtain assistance from the police department? Is this how you're aiding the unhoused community? As you know, we all also witnessed the police beating students, who'd intended to have a peaceful sit-in on campus. The police keep us safe? Your police? No, they do not. How are you holding them accountable? Answer us. Answer the community. You can do it, I have seen you do it. Abolish the APD.
Thank you. Max, please go ahead.
Hi, um, my name's Max, I, I was here last time, actually, um, you know, initially, I wanna comment on getting the jo, the charges dropped for Mike, I think that's a really important thing on the local level that you guys can do. But, you know, since then, I've a bit more on this, on ethnic cleansing and genocide we're seeing going on in Palestine, that like, my parents were a part of the anti-apartheid movement in South Africa, and as I understand it, after these calls for divestment are calls for sanctions, and it's the idea that you can't be neutral on a moving bus, and if, and so essentially, people are looking at who's taking this thing seriously and taking action, and they'll remember who's taking it seriously and taking action when sanctions are put across. So if you're still doing business with countries that are doing war crimes, that reputation is a hard one to get rid of. And so I, I would recommend you take the suggestions and the calls to divest seriously, knowing that the international community is very much geared in a way that's nest, like, different than our local community is. And that's quite important for the school as a, an international, as something that brings in a lot of interest from international people. Students will be looking at how the local community has acted on these things, and whether they want to go to school in this area or not, because of the actions they've taken. And another thing to point out is, the apartheid in South Africa fell under Republican and conservative parties, both in England and America. So this idea that, like, local and national, like, when you get involved in politics, actually what you hear a lot is the local people saying, it only operates at nationally, and then you get the national people saying, actually, it all operates locally. So that passing of the blame is not a good thing to do as a representative, as I understand And I know a lot of you, I think three of you have been re-elected recently, and, and that kind of ties in with the, the calls to divestment, where reputation doesn't necessarily get lost overnight, you know, people hope that people will change, or notice, or do something, but once people realize that nothing is happening and nothing is changing, it's very hard to regain that reputation. So as representatives, I think it's, you know, I, I think what you're hearing from the community now is, they don't necessarily think you guys are doing enough, and would like to see you guys do more. And so...
Thank you for your comments, Max. Ramira, please go ahead.
Hi, um, yeah, uh, wanted to reiterate what folks said addressing Alex Stillman. Yeah, we've, we've, we've been in these city councils over a year ago, we, we've shown up, and you treat and, and brutalize and hur, and harass the indigenous people of our community, including Palestinians. But yeah, so, um, one, gonna reiterate that the charges should be dropped on Mike. Literally cooking on the plaza, that, that's all Mike was doing, and he was brutalized by five police officers. So I hope you also hold them accountable. And like Jamila said, there, there are actions you can take, and I encourage all of you to attend a future anti-Palestinian racism workshop, training. Pick up a book, I don't know, like, we have video, just you on video, fully condoning a genocide from these meetings. This is a Palestinian Holocaust, and you, and you have repeatedly come on the side of this Zionist Nazi party, like. So I hope to see you all begin to take actions, rather than just pass resolution after resolution, which obviously doesn't do, is not doing anything, and it's not cutting it. So, but I expect accountability from all of you. By next time we're here, tell us, give us an update on Mike, give us an update on what's happening to the police, right? That's y'all's homework. Thank you.
Thank you. Cory, please go ahead.
Hi, how you doing? Really quick, I would like to say thank you to everyone that called, or even showed up and said what they had to say. I love the passion, and I love what I heard from everyone. But I would encourage everyone that's listening right now, these people are who they show you they are. If you don't agree with them, there's another election coming, put them out. That's your power. Let's turn our emotions into strength and strategize. But now, everyone is talking about what they want, but now let me explain what the board gets, and what the mayor gets, and what the police get out of dropping the charges on this young man. What you would get is, you would show the community that's on the phone with you right now, and on Zoom, in their place, that you have compassion, that you're trying to understand, that you're trying to help your community. I'm not saying everything that young man did was right, but what you don't understand is, is brown men, we are intimidated, nervous, and there's so many other things I can tell you. As a 52-year-old man that fought for this country, and seen what my bombs, my bullets did to people, 'cause I was in the Marine Corps for 15 years, it's not a good thing. I can tell you personally, it's not a good thing. And I can tell you from the military mindset, because I had a top, top-class clearance, what they're doing is not right. And at least what you guys can do is tell us why you don't support Palestine, why you don't support being a sister city. These are the things that need to be asked, but what you can consider is that your seats and your positions don't get replaced by somebody else. And you will actually show the community that's on the phone with you right now, some compassion that you are not showing tonight. And I'm not even gonna try to tell you that, to get you to kinda understand, because you can't. You can't. I've tried that before throughout my whole 52 years in life, it doesn't work. And also, was it posted what the young man could and could not do in the square? There are certain things that can be done legally to support that young man, and you better have your Ts crossed and your Is dotted.
Thank you for your comments, thank you. Alice, please go ahead.
Thank you. So, my name is Alice Finan, and I don't normally get enough time to introduce myself, apparently, in the way that is needed. So I am a local resident, I've been here since I was 18 in 1996, went to Humboldt State University. I'm a teacher, I am a parent of two high school students that go to Arcata High, and I am an active community member. So I, um, would like to ask you city council members, regarding the sister city in Palestine, Alex Stillman, why can't you support a sister city? Stacy Atkins Salazar, why are you not on board with a sister city concept? Mayor Meredith Matthews, why don't you support a sister city? I would like to know. So either, like, next meeting, maybe we could have this on, as an agenda item, and that way, y'all could really tell us exactly why you don't support Palestine, why you don't support a sister city. And specifically, Alex Stillman, so, the reason that I'm not there tonight, even though I have been on these calls several times, I work all day, and I have to come home and take care of my children, so I'm here at home, taking care of them as well. And I also would like to address specifically, if you feel like you can't do anything in this small city, why are you in government? It sounds like, even though you were just re-elected, that it is time for you to resign. I'm happy to have that conversation, maybe we could start up an email chain, and that way I can send you a picture of my face, because even though I was there a month ago in person, sitting there for hours, you don't know who I am. Maybe it's time that you get out and you meet these people, and you remember our faces. I think you're gonna remember my name now, I think maybe you should make a little list of all of our names, because we're not gonna go away, we're gonna keep coming back until this is resolved. And this might be really uncomfortable for you, but it's, it's, it's time that you sit with your discomfort, and, and you work through that process. It sounds like maybe for a long time, you've been very comfortable, and it's really, you should be uncomfortable. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Luna, please go ahead.
Hi, um, I think that this goes a lot deeper than just the issues that are coming up in the community right now. I think we can obviously point to accountability as a major issue, I think we can say, well, it's, it's great that several of you have mentioned that you want to get the charges dropped for Mike at a previous meeting. But I think we also need to look at how this was allowed to happen in the first place, and why there was no preemptive action to prevent this kind of thing from happening. Because what it feels like is waiting around until people get upset in the community, and then trying to slap some Band-Aid on it, and make some vague statements about unity and respect and love, and it honestly feels like... And it honestly feels like a way to avoid accountability. Because this is, this is within your power to make these changes. And, and yeah, it's ironic to me that at the beginning of these meetings, there's land acknowledgements about how this is stolen land. And yet, I don't really see a coordinated effort to try to return sovereignty to the indigenous population that every meeting, you mention how your government originally dispossessed. And I think that that's, at some point, that becomes an intentional choice. I've heard you say in this meeting that you don't have the power to do these broader things. That's the power of the federal government. But that's, that's a choice to go along with that system and wait until you can make small changes that, you know, maybe mitigate the smallest amount of damage. That is a choice that prolongs that system. And honestly, I, I think it's also, it's lying to yourself and lying to your community, because you are in a position of power in the government. You may not be able to make the largest changes in how it operates, but you have a position of power, and you can use that as leverage to obstruct the system in every way you can. And so I think that, you know, when it comes to indigenous sovereignty, when it comes to black people's safety, I don't see, I don't see how, if you actually care about these things, how, how can you say that you are going to abide by the rules prescribed by a system that you acknowledge goes against these very values? How, how can you say that? How can you say?
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. I do not see any other hands raised. Thank you. Thank you for commenting. Yeah, oh, dates of feuds for meetings. We are scheduling a special meeting to certify the election results, swear on new city council members and elect a mayor and vice mayor for 3 o'clock on Thursday, December 12th, 2024, in the council chambers. Is that gonna work for everybody? All right. You're gonna adjourn this meeting, get home safe, everybody.